All right, we'll get started for tonight. Welcome everybody to the City of Gilbert City Council Meeting Tuesday, April 9th of 2024. The time is 6:05 PM. Roll call please.
Mayor, Councillor Pontenin.
Here.
Councillor Heitzman.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Councillor Pulis.
Here.
Councillor Skinsich.
Here.
I also have City Attorney, Operations Director, and Clerk.
Thank you. We do have a quorum. If everybody would please stand and join us in a Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Did we have any approved additions or deletions?
No, Mayor.
I think we were going to cover it under yours. Excellent. Move on to the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councillor Heitzman, supported by Councillor Pulis. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. None. Motion carries. Do we have any public input tonight?
Public input?
Yes.
I came in at the right time.
The right time.
I'm down at the recycling center once a week. I'm asking if you can put some blacktop down there or something. It is mud. It's total mud. You know, it's hard to lock in, so I'm asking if you can put something down there.
Sam, is there something we can fill those holes? I've seen those mud puddles down there.
I know back when we started building the sewer plant, that was supposed to be a temporary spot. So we kind of made it temporary. It would really be nice to, if that's the city's permanent spot for that, it would be nice to put some blacktop down. You know, Class 5 is going to keep going, doing what it is, keep mud and whatnot, but it would be up to the city, you know, and I could get some quotes here coming up to get some blacktop. But yeah, we can add Class 5, no problem, but you're still going to get that mud and whatnot during the springtime.
If you have rocky Class 5, you'd be okay. Do you have any rocky Class 5 around?
No, I would have to get some rock from, you know, one of the construction outfits around here or some of that black rock, you know, but it's still going to go all over the road. It's still going to get, you know, when we plow in the springtime.
Do you have some old sheeting or anything you could put down? Plywood sheeting of any type?
For?
So you could walk on it.
Oh.
I think that's a slippery, tripping.
Yeah, if it's wet, I could see that being.
Depends on the texture.
I mean, that's what I was looking at, but I mean, I can definitely put some Class 5 down, but I think the city should look into something in the future. I'll try to get a price quote here so we have an idea of maybe budget season next year or maybe something we can slip in here this fall with some blacktop.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I've seen those recycling containers, those big heavy metal containers, kind of grind in and sink into that blacktop.
They do.
Especially with, there's no shade at all. There's, it's just going to.
They do, but it's.
Sink right in.
The nice thing is.
My question to Sam is get a concrete quote as well as a blacktop quote.
Yeah, concrete's going to be a little bit harder.
Or just crushed rock, P rock.
I can do P rock. I mean, what would be nice though too is even if we, you know, even if we made it a little bit better down there, that's something we can look into, move it back further. I know, like I say, when we made that thing, it was just a temporary spot, you know, people are parking on the road and whatnot.
Yeah.
So if it's looking as more of a permanent situation, maybe what we should do is look at moving it back further so people can pull up and park off the road, off the driving lane and whatnot, you know, but like I say, that's going to even cost a little bit more money. The Class 5 and stuff is pretty cheap. It's more of the blacktop if that's what we want to do. I can move it a little bit. I know right where it's at now, it's kind of like there's one sinkhole right there, but we can move it towards town a little bit, but that's, I put it there for a reason because it's, you know, it's kind of right at the edge of town, but like I say, it's up to this council if they want me to move it a little bit. We can always adjust it as we go here, but I will get some Class 5.
You can even put recycle there. If you get some good recycle that you can use, you could put that down instead of Class 5.
And I can talk to Masabi Patuminas or see if they got any of that. I don't know. I think blacktopping it would be the way to go though for the future, just cleaning up and making it nice.
And even recycle will work just as well as blacktop if you add to it when you ever get gouged. You don't have a lot of expense in it.
Mayor.
Yes.
Is it something that we want to leave there permanently?
Yeah.
I believe so.
That's a question I was going to ask.
I know over the years, we've talked about moving it, not so much back down to the wastewater plant anymore, but there was some area behind the old getting go or the ICO here down in that parking lot, just so it's not four dumpsters, especially when the cardboard and other things weren't, they were getting piled up outside of the bins. I don't know how it's been lately, but is that the first thing you want to see when you drive into Gilbert from that side? We were going to try and hide it more rather than have it wide open right there, but.
What do you mean, where the plows are now or where they keep?
That was one spot that was talked about, but you know, there's numerous other spots I'm sure that they could go, just thinking.
I think where it is now should be tucked into the corner more instead of bringing it towards the residence. Put it in the corner more and more out of sight.
Towards the alleyway building?
I know there's a trail that goes through there onto the, you know, OHV trail or bike trail.
Yeah.
If you moved it towards that pile that we have when you enter town, make a spot in there, you know, it's more tucked away where it's not so visible. I don't know. It's just, there's many places, but I think it should stay there instead of bringing it by the residence over here by the rec center because of the summer smells that come from it.
That might not be a terrible idea, Sam. If the four bins are oriented this way now perpendicular to the lower road, they could actually kind of spin and go parallel to the lower road and get tucked in that corner. Might be a little cleaner look all the way around.
And that's no big deal. We can do that. It's just, you know, I'd like to, if that's where the permanent spot is going to be, we should probably make it a little bit nicer, you know, area, nicer for vehicles to pull off the road and whatnot. I know, you know, the lighting may be an issue over where, I know Councillor Pontenin was talking, but we can always get another pole and put something there too, so.
Or just shine the light that way from that existing pole, whatever.
That's right.
But then you could also put a fence on the highway side to block it from you too if you put it there, ducked it by that hill, so that it wouldn't be visible as you drive into town or go out.
It would be nice to have the whole area fenced in.
You could just put a wooden fence that they run 60 bucks a panel. You could run three of them there and you wouldn't even see it from the highway then anymore.
Or just that chain link with the.
Weave it.
Weave it.
Yeah. Either way.
Just something, something stuff doesn't blow away either. It should be more contained in that area, but.
If you want to come up with some plans that work for you and your crew, Sam, that'd be great.
Yeah, I can.
Thanks, sir.
In the meanwhile, we can get some gravel down there to fill the mud hole.
Yes, you can.
Thank you. That's a quick fix, Mayor Joe. We'll get it figured out. Thank you. Any other public input?
I just would want to find out what the status is from our city attorney of the charter commission work. We've waited for several weeks, several months now to get some of the final stuff back to us so that we can meet again and make our final recommendation to get this put on the ballot. Our ballot deadline is going to be coming up in August. It's April, so we only have a couple of months left and we've all volunteered a lot of time to get this done. I'd like to get a status on where that is.
I can answer that. I talked to Ryan and it is done. He is just waiting to do the formants and policies and that. So once he goes down, he'll do something.
Because it has to be on the ballot by when, Jill?
In May, I believe. We need to get it to the county to get it on the ballot.
By mid-May?
I think, mid-May or beginning of June because it'll be the same time we add our people to the ballot as well.
Okay, right.
With any time of the year.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody else for public input? All right, we'll move on to reports from the mayor and council. At this time, I have no report, so I'll pass on to Councillor Pontenin.
I don't have anything tonight.
Thank you. Councillor Heitzman?
I don't have a report, but I do have a question that we brushed on very briefly. Filing deadlines for, oh, I don't know, council vacancies?
It is, I have on my desk, but I know the end is June 2nd. It's like two weeks, so that'd be like 16th to June 2nd. It's a two-week time period.
Okay.
I have the exact dates, but they'll need to be posted as well.
Just want everybody to be aware of that.
Yeah, we have two councillors and a mayor.
Can you use your mic? I can't hear you.
Thank you, Jeremy. We have two councillors and a mayor seat coming up, so the filing ends June 2nd, but it's a two-week time for it towards the end of May to the beginning of June that everybody will need to file if they're interested.
Thank you, Ms. Jill.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councillor Pulis?
I'm just going to touch on that a little bit and hopefully we see some names out there and some fresh faces and fresh ideas because we've been sitting on this council for, well, I've almost spent, the time I'm done will be eight and a half years, so it's be nice to see someone else try to step up into this spot. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councillor Skinsich?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. We'll move on to the reports from staff, boards, and commissions. Fire chief isn't here.
We do have some items on the agenda though for him later on.
Request, correct. So fire department purchase, request of purchase and installation for a washing machine extractor.
Let's go with this one first.
Okay, yep, there it is. Okay, and accept donation. City has received a donation from the Minnesota Firefighters Foundation in the amount of $8,000 for equipment needs of the fire department. Council action to accept the donation.
Move.
Moved by Councillor Pulis.
Support.
Supported by Councillor Heitzman. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, can I correct you on that? It shouldn't be Fire Fighters Foundation.
It should be Fire Relief Association.
Okay, Fire Relief Association. Thank you for that correction. So donation from the Minnesota Fire Relief Association.
Don't move.
Gilbert. Gilbert Fire Department Relief Association in the amount of $8,000. Any further discussion?
I see that's for the second one, right? Because you already have one and this is for the second one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. None. Motion carries. Five zero. Which leads up to this one. Request to purchase an installation, a washing machine extractor in the amount of $7,495.
Move.
Part. Moved by Councillor Pulis, supported by Councillor Heitzman. Any further discussion?
So the donation is paying for the machine.
Correct.
Yep.
And potential wiring to put in a switch and all that.
All right.
Copper lines, things like that.
Okay.
Yeah. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. None. Motion carries. Five zero.
Here's the third one.
The third one is the Gilbert Fire Department is asking for approval to accept a, no, third one. The Gilbert Fire Department is asking for approval to submit a grant to Lake County Power for two EV blankets to help fight electric vehicle fires. The grant amount is $5,760.
Move.
Support.
Moved by Councillor Heitzman, supported by Councillor Skinsich. Any further discussion?
So this, when will you know the results of the grant application?
I can't add to that. I will say that Gilbert Fire got paged to a vehicle fire today conveniently enough, and at any time, we could be called to fight an EV fire, which is significantly different than fighting a gas combustion injury fire.
Basically out of barium.
So these are designed to help in that.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. None. Motion carries. Five zero. And that was it, the three.
That's the quote from the supplier of the extractor.
All right, moving on. City Attorney Kuslucher?
Good evening, Mayor. I don't have a formal report. I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Teacher?
I have nothing at this time. Obviously, the next council meeting, I'll be bringing forth a couple of items in regards to the, I know there was a discussion in regards to sirens today. Unfortunately, I had my commission meeting prior, so I'll have some more information for the next council meeting in regards to some options soon.
I just need to know, would you like to have the special council meeting or at the five o'clock or would you like to have the regular meeting? Because Dewey Johnson from St. Louis County would attend to answer any questions on that.
What would be convenient for him, five or six or?
Probably five would be.
It's not working.
Probably five would be better. But either way, where are the council sites? He'll accommodate himself.
I'd say have shoot for five. We'll have a work session. He can come. That way we're not keeping him until however long it.
Okay. And then also next week, I'll be at the chief's conference and one of my priorities is to meet with, there's a couple of other companies that do the sirens, so I'm going to have conversations with them on some options and possibly another bid as that 93 seems rather exorbitant, so.
Yeah. We'll move on to public works operation. Sam?
I don't have much other than we've just been starting spring, our spring rituals here and, you know, street sweeper sweeping the roads and getting everything all fixed up. There's a bunch of campground stuff we got to work on here where that's opening in about two and a half weeks here, so yeah, it's going to be a busy spring, so that's all I have unless it's.
No, thank you, Sam. And we have nobody on Zoom?
We actually, Wendy and the library, neither of them had any formal reports, so they were good.
Thank you. We'll move on to the advisory boards.
I've only got a couple of things. I'm just actually going to jump down the agenda for the acceptance of the dashboard. You'll see we updated it. Probably the biggest thing.
Excuse me, Paul?
Yes.
I'm going to hold you off on that for a sec.
Sure.
Council has some questions for you.
Sure.
Okay. It was brought to our attention that you are in control of our Firefly and operating it?
I am the administrator on a volunteer basis, yes.
Okay. Is it true that you're holding overflow parking to benefit your campground to fill 80% before you open the overflow?
We had a discussion at our last campground meeting as to what the right process, what the right steps were. We talked with the organizers about that when we set up the overflow last year actually, and that was a similar agreement was that we wanted it as overflow, and that's the direction we've been moving under.
Who's we? Who's the we?
The campground board. I talked with Jill about it in the past. We want to make sure that this was an overflow.
For Sherwood Forest?
For the event.
Correct, but not for West Forty Campground?
I don't believe it has ever been that.
Okay, but that's what I'm hearing is you're in control of Firefly and you won't open the overflow camping until your campground is 80% full. Is that correct?
It was actually opened the very first night of registration.
Which was?
Was April 1st.
Correct, but you were not allowing reservations to the overflow until you had 80% capacity, correct?
I was waiting for confirmation between Wendy and I to confirm that both campgrounds were full, which was what the campground board had discussed as the process.
But that was never approved by council, correct?
That was not, that was not something that we brought to the council, no. But that was, that was the working process.
Okay.
If there was, if there needs to be a correction to that, I'm happy to make that correction, but I, I sense that there's more to this that.
No, what is reported is that you won't allow crawl from the cure customer, crawl from the cure customers to register at Sherwood Forest overflow until they reserved at your campground.
The campground board and in discussions with the clerk, we came up with a process which was to ensure that both campgrounds were full and then the overflow would be opened. That's, that's the instruction that I was, that's the process that I was following, following because the intention was to make sure that customers coming, guests coming to Gilbert had the best facilities, which were things like had full hookups, full electric water sewer and things like that. And last year was, was very much a trial process. We had after the, after the crawl for the cure event, we talked about how we could make this better, and that was during the time when we were in the process of selecting a new system. And after we chose, after the council had approved Firefly, I went and had a conversation with Jeff Ward, who's the organizer, and we had laid out a plan for how this would work, and they agreed to it at the time that the primary campgrounds in town would be filled first, and then once that was, once that was sufficiently kind of agreed to between the two campgrounds that the overflow would be filled.
You don't see that as being a conflict of interest for the City of Gilbert?
I am, I am following a process that was agreed upon. I, I don't see that as a conflict because there were several people that were part of the conversation, including the organizers themselves.
Okay. Do you recall this conversation?
I recall specifically the 80% or any incentive or event and that was just going to open. I know that last year was a mess if it wasn't open in time, but I, sorry, Paul, I don't remember us specifically saying open campground. Just like.
Okay, and that overflow from my understanding was set up for Sherwood Forest only, nothing to do with West Forty Campground is my understanding, so I guess I don't understand how the board would make that decision to fill your campground on city's behalf?
We did not, let me, let me be clear here. The campground board was looking for, was looking out for how we could best accommodate the event. It was, it was looking at how the City of Gilbert could provide the best of the options. Now, most times, and honestly, when, when we're talking about numbers and percentages, there, I get the sense that there, that there is an accusation that I was intentionally doing something malicious, and there was not. I was following the process that was, that was talked about well before the event, the event happened. And I was trying to make, to follow that process the best that I could. The reality is both Wendy and myself were very busy on the 1st of April, so busy that in fact, my campground filled up at like seven or eight o'clock that night, and Wendy and I had a phone call, and if you want, I can find the time on my phone when I called her to discuss, do we feel that both, you know, that we can open the overflow? Are you ready to take them? And that was like eight or nine o'clock the night of the first registration.
So who actually booked the overflow?
Who booked it?
Yeah.
Most of the bookings came through the website.
Who actually approved the booking of the overflow parking or camping? Who controlled that?
Who physically controlled it? I did.
Okay.
But I, I waited to make sure that Wendy was able to, because there were going to be calls that were going to go to her, and I wanted to make sure she was in a place to be able to do that.
Okay, but when somebody called to reserve for, and they wanted overflow, how did you handle that? What did you tell them?
Um.
If they called and they said they wanted the overflow at Sherwood Forest campground, what was said?
There was nothing said by, by me. I was not.
You didn't refuse them?
Generally, what happened is people, because of the agreement that we had with the event organizers, we, both campgrounds and the overflow, so all three spaces blocked off all of the sites, and we gave them codes to give to their people once they registered for the event. So we made special accommodations so that people would register for the event first and then book their camping, which was different than has happened in the past. And that was part of the conversation that we had last fall about how can collectively the city, me, you know, to, to get people to register for the event first. So we gave them codes so that people can come online and book them. Both Sherwood, my campground were open on April 1st from the beginning of when they started booking. The overflow camping was held off. Basically, the way that we, the way that was blocked was the date was set so that reservations could not be made until all parties agreed that the overflow was to start being used. Once we hit that threshold, and I was able to confirm that the folks at the crawl needed it, that Wendy was ready to take them, my campground was full, there was no problems there, we all, all three of us agreed that it was time to open up the overflow. That happened, like I said, within, so registration opened at like six o'clock, and by like eight-ish, we made the decision to open the overflow.
So what involvement did Wendy have with the overflow?
Basically, in terms of making the decision that it was now time to turn it on to open it, that was the confirmation call that I made to her to say, are you, are we ready to now open this? Are you ready to take calls in case there's any problems? She said yes. Within literally a minute after that, I was able to change the date to open up the overflow.
Okay, part of the complaints I got was that you locked out the overflow and weren't allowing anybody to use it, and you made the comment that until your campground is 80% full, you won't unlock it. and weren't allowing anybody to use it, and you made the comment that until your campground is 80% full, you won't unlock it. Is that true?
That was, that was what we had, that's part of the overall agreement that we had back in the fall, was that both campgrounds were going to be sufficiently full. I didn't really, I didn't put a specific number on it at that point in time. And frankly, I don't really care, because I'm gonna, I was, like, literally, like I said, I was full by 8 o'clock.
Right.
So, and keep in mind, at the same time, I was taking my own customer calls to make sure that, that people, so, and there is, you know, Wendy was taking calls, I was taking calls. You can't do everything all at the same time. We were overloaded with people coming in and getting things done. And so I had, I had to set priorities.
Yeah.
And one of them was I needed to make sure that I could answer my own customer emails and get them situated.
Okay, well, the reason I'm asking this, it was brought to our attention that you sort of held or locked those overflow sites. And I heard that a lot of Crawl for the Cure wanted them. They didn't want to stay at your campground because they wanted to stay close to the venue. So that's concerning to me that you would lock them out and not give them that opportunity and force them to stay at Sherwood or at West Forty. Per your discussion you had last fall or whatever, that should have been a council approval, not your decision as the board to make that. West Forty had nothing to do with the overflow parking. That was designed for Sherwood Forest for the Crawl for the Cure. So any agreement you had with them, I don't think was approved by council. And here, I'm going to read you this. You remember that letter you sent to Jill saying you wouldn't have any contact with Sherwood Forest customers? You weren't going to involve yourself in any of that? It was dated November 13th?
Yep, I do remember that.
Yet here you are. Okay, it says, and I'll read it to you. "Per our conversation, I submitted a letter agreement to the city of Gilbert to outline my scope and volunteer work related to the transition and reservation systems of the campfire life to Firefly in order to execute the city council resolution to make the platform change from October 10th regular meeting by January 1st of 2024. In order to do so, I acknowledge that I have received access to confidential data related to the operation of Sherwood Forest campground in both the camp life and Firefly systems. I agree that all information data of this process belongs to the city of Gilbert exclusively. I will not use this information for personal or business purposes. All data files will be maintained on the USB flash drive and turned over to the city clerk at the completion of the project. At no time will data belonging to the city of Gilbert be saved on any of my personal or business devices. Additionally, all contact with customers of Sherwood Forest will be done by the campground host or city administrative staff. At no time will I initiate contact with guests during this project. As part of the execution of this transition, I will make recommendations to the city related to how and when we research up appropriate milestones in which the city may want to communicate with customers additionally. I will assist in crafting templated messages for these milestones upon request." You remember that letter?
I remember that letter. I wrote that letter. And 100% of that remains true. I have not contacted a single customer from Sherwood. I have not, I have not initiated any contact with a single customer.
But you're forcing them to contact you. You took over Firefly for reservations. Let me read you this. This was sent to Jeff Ward's phone by you March 29th. "Hey Jeff, I saw something last night about campground booking that said SECA spaces would be able to be booked on April 1st. That isn't the agreement. The city will only open SECA campsites after both campgrounds are full. If the sheets with booking information go out to people for the SECA sites on April 1st, they won't be able to book them because the system won't open until both campgrounds agree." Wendy has no idea of what you're talking about. There is no agreement between you and Wendy to open up or this overflow. So I guess I'm really confused as to why you would be in charge of Firefly and the booking of the overflow.
So the agreement that that, that that particular piece talks about, that goes back to after we had decided that we booked on Firefly, that we had a new process, and we talked about how that was going to work. And again, it goes back to the understanding that both primary campgrounds would fill up and then the overflow would work. That's what I, that's what I referenced. I know that Wendy has been, has been present for part of those conversations. I don't know if she had all the details, but this was a mix of conversations between the crawl organizers. I know that I've had the conversations at our campground board meetings in the past of how to move forward. I can't point to specifics. I don't have, you know, a piece to read from. But I was trying, I was trying to do what, what was in the best interest of managing all of the people coming to town for that weekend to give them the best, the best options.
Right, I understand that, Paul, but what is the purpose of your position on the committee?
The purpose of my position on the committee is to, is to work for the city of Gilbert to make sure that, that Sherwood is running properly, that events are being accommodated properly.
And you're pretty much a consultant to the city council.
Correct.
So every, every, every action you take has to be approved by council. You took actions here upon yourself. For one, by operating Firefly during our booking reservation, which you clearly say that Wendy should have been doing by January 1st. Or been trained, I stand corrected, trained by January 1st. And then she would take over the system and manage the booking. That didn't happen.
So, okay, so we need to step, you're talking about a couple of different things here. So let's set aside what you're talking about with what happened with Crawl for the Cure. So there, the system itself, and that letter that you read, that I wrote, that referred specifically to being the administrator for the Firefly system until somebody in City Hall was able to take that function over. I am happy to turn that function over at any point. All you have to do is ask me to, and I will. But there is nobody in City Hall who is, who has properly trained on the administrative function, which includes adding users, changing prices, things like that. Things that you really don't want to have a contractor doing, you want to have somebody in this building doing. Now with, with the clerk leaving and an interim and hopefully shorter period than not, a new clerk coming in, that function of being an administrator for a system needs to be somebody in this, in this building. And I have advocated from that from the very beginning. But I was volunteering my time and my knowledge and my expertise to make sure that that function was, was held by somebody who understood what, what was going on. And I don't want this to fail. But if you want me to hand, hand over control right now, just name the person that you want to have it, I'll turn that over. So that is separate from, and, and part of that, part of that administrator function is putting together the parameters of when the special events area is able to be booked versus not. That's not an administrative level that you, in my opinion, you don't want to have somebody who is not associated to City Hall with that function. But if you would like to do that, you can do that at your own peril, to be honest. I, I saw the mess that happened with camp life. And fortunately, we were able to get control of that so that we were able to get proper rates put in. But if you look forward to, and Wendy may be here for another five years. She may be done at the end of this year. I don't know. But if you give that control to this, to your system, to somebody who may be here and may be gone soon, you're literally, kind of you're, you're tying your hands behind your back and crippling yourself from, from being able to access the system. So that's what an administrator is to, to, function is to do. If you want me to hand that to Randy and have meetings and talk to him about, here's how this needs to be done, I'm happy to do that.
Well, I think, honestly, Paul, I think the behaviors of what I've seen and read in text messages, it is a conflict of interest.
Okay.
I seriously believe that. Does any council have, council member have any questions for Paul?
Can I read that part of it or not? So one of the complaints, one of the conversations was, well, where does it start? The West Forty RV still has plenty of campsites available and the other, overflow will not open up until that is done. One lady puts on there, "Well, I'd rather be in the overflow, but whatever." Someone else responds. She said, "I'm out. I'm not going to take the chance on anything that isn't already set." And there's multiple complaints about, they don't want to stay at your campground because they want to be closer to the event like they were last year. So I, I don't know. We got tons of complaints on it, so that's why it's being brought up.
First of all, I apologize for that. I had not been, I had not seen any of those comments that were complaints, to be honest. Had I, and I was on the phone with Jeff Ward during, during that evening as well. He did express that, that there, you know, there was some pressure for folks that wanted to say, and I said, "Just hold off just a little bit and we'll get this straightened out." At that point, when I had that conversation, I still had three or four emails that I still had to get to for my own, for my own campground. And I apologize for that, but, you know, I, I couldn't give a straight answer to, to say, here's where we were until I knew where we were as far as the situation. And it was coming in very, very fast. Keep in mind, this was all happening within a period of, you know, the crunch hour that this was all happening.
No, and I understand that. It can be hectic with, when you're booking online. But again, my concern is that you had 100% admin control over our system. And you were holding up the overflow parking until, or camping until your campground was full. 80% full. That's what's concerning to me. And I've got it in the text here.
I, I think you've made your point. So my question is, what do you want, what do you want to happen next?
Well, I, I think council is going to take some action. And the first action would be to have you removed as the administrator.
Okay, I just need to know who you want me to transmit. I have no problem in doing that. I would recommend that there be at least some follow-up as far as like, so I can have the opportunity to explain, here's where you get your training. I don't want whoever this gets handed over to to be completely blind.
Do, did we ever get hold of Firefly today? Well, I think we can handle that. If we have any questions and if you're willing to answer, we'll reach out to you. But it's my understanding, we need a motion to remove Paul from the campground committee? That'll be next. Is that correct?
I was just wondering if you're doing the administrator piece first or of the, of the software? Is that a separate piece or are you doing the whole thing together?
To remove from the software, what I, my understanding was first and then the committee. So, and we-
Again, I will say, I will do that voluntarily. Give me a computer, I'll log in and I can do it right now.
Moved by counselors, Skjendzic supported by counselor Polis to remove Paul Skurback from the campground committee. Any further discussion?
So you agree that you will help the, the next person that's going to be in that position?
Yeah, I just need to know who the person is.
Okay.
We'll reach out to you and let you know if we need, we need to. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay? None. Motion carries 5-0. The second was council was going to take action to abolish, to disband the city of Gilbert campground board. Resolution 24-13. Resolution disbanding the city of Gilbert campground board. Whereas the city of Gilbert pursuant to chapter 2, section 2.02 of the city charter had in the past created a campground board and advised the council in matters pertaining to the city-owned campground and to promote by advice its orderly operation. And whereas the city of Gilbert has received advice from the campground board historically, except during periods in which the board ceased in its regular operations for failure of participation. And whereas the current operations of the campground board have become superfluous in light of support and guidance received by the council from the city, city staff and contract workers. And whereas the city council of the city of Gilbert is capable of collecting all information necessary to set appropriate policies and controls for the operation of the city's campground without the assistance of an advisory campground board. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the city of Gilbert that the city council hereby abolishes the campground advisory board. This action of the city council shall be effective forthwith, dated April 9th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Moved by counselor Polis.
I'll support.
Supported by counselor Skjendzic. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay? None. Motion carries 5-0.
I do have one question.
Yes.
Who is the admin going to be put to? Because he does, someone needs to-
Someone has to take it.
Right, and I was going to have IT, Randy.
Okay.
Because then he can monitor it.
Okay.
And then we would have Wendy get control back so she can complete the bookings.
Do we need to motion that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Both parts? So I would, I would make that motion then, to give the administrative-
Duties.
Duties to our IT person, Randy. And Wendy would just be the, she's the campground host, I guess? I don't know how, what she's actually listed as on there.
She'd be an authorized user.
Authorized user with limited-
Which she should be anyway, I guess.
If it's like any other, you know, administrator.
She is currently set up as a, as a manager or user. I can't remember what the terminology is.
Manager.
She'll have as much power as the administrator of the site allows her to have, would be my understanding. Wendy would be either the manager or the user. Until we do get a, a full-time replacement for Jill, then, you know, that person would then also have a suitedly administrator roles to play.
I'll support.
So moved by counselor Skjendzic to appoint Randy Parkhurst. Parkhurst, our IT personnel to be the appointed administrator of the Firefly system. And Wendy as the manager of the system and campground. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. None, motion carries five to zero.
I do want to say just one more thing, if I may. I, I, I feel it's unfortunate that what just took place, took place. If you go back and you look at the revenues that the City of Gilbert has increased over the last four years, they have, the growth has been phenomenal. My intention from the very beginning was to make sure that the City of Gilbert was a great place for tourists to come and have a good time, explore, and spend money in town. That has been my intention from the very beginning. I do want Sherwood and the city to do well. Doing well gives you all the opportunity to use that money for things that we can't normally afford. Snow, snowplow removal, transferring money into the budget to fill gaps at the end of the year when we're considering levies. That stuff was not available in the past because we weren't financially as strong as we are now. And I believe that it could have gone, it could have gotten much better, could have continued to grow. I am afraid for the city that it's going to go back to where it was four or five years ago, where we see a campground that is not managed. Or you have people that come in, open it, do their thing and leave, and don't really make the revenue that the city should be getting from it. And so I think that's, that's really sad to see. Because I think in, in the long run, I think the city is going to lose out. I apologize for anything that transpired. That was not my intent. But I always knew that being, leading the campground board and having my own campground, there is, there is a potential for, for conflict of interest. But I'm also the only business in town that has a competitor that is the one I pay taxes to. And that is also an unfair situation. The city has very deep pockets to do whatever the heck it wants to do. And Tom, I know that I've had this conversation with you when you were running for count for mayor, that what the city does also impacts me and can do so adversely. This city is not business friendly, despite what you all think, think is. But it is not. You look up and down Main Street Gilbert and you see the lack of businesses. And then you go to Bowawick, a town that's half of our size, and you see a bustling Main Street. None of you own a business. None of you know what's involved in running a business. And so when you have, when you force a business to pay garbage fees when they, when they pay a commercial hauler, when you force businesses to pay for three, four, five meters, and you have, you add on extra, you add on extra fees, and this is not just me. There is, there's other businesses in town that are feeling these things. Extra fees and the city not, you know, making good on their own deals or not paying attention to what's going on. I think that's the biggest thing, is the city's not paying attention to what's going on to business leaders, business owners. That hurts your business community. And so I just ask for those of you who will be leaving office, those of you who will still be here, think about that. Businesses offset residential taxes in this town. Without businesses, residential taxes go up even higher. This is not a business-friendly town, it never has been. But you have the ability to change that and you do nothing. My intention from the very beginning has to help grow business and to bring more revenue into Gilbert. So I'll leave you with that.
Mayor, if I may?
Make it quick, Leo.
Yes, I will. It's unbelievable what you people just did just to dissolve the campground committee. To me, that's unbelievable and unfathomable. But that's on your conscience.
All right, we'll move on to clerk treasure.
Thank you. First of all, I'll run down a financial report you have in front of you. Currently in checking, we, or in campground checking, we have a hundred and sixty-five thousand nine hundred fifty-eight dollars forty-one cents. General checking balance after current consent agenda checks and outstanding will be four hundred and sixty thousand eight hundred twelve dollars and ninety-seven cents. Our savings after a transfer into the general checking is a hundred and ninety-eight thousand nine hundred eighty-nine dollars seventy-eight cents. And our CD earned another twenty-five hundred for the last quarter, putting us at two hundred and forty-six thousand seven oh six. That's a six-month CD, it's up in May, so you'll want to decide if you're going to keep it in there and let it keep rolling or what you want to do from there, so just keep it on your radar. Any questions on that?
I have one on that CD note. Are we getting a dump truck? As far as I know, we-